I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Martino, can you get a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Kurtz. Mrs. Bytes?
Here.
Mr. Martino here, Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Rathke. Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Radowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf? And Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Announcements: On June 21st, 2016, Board on the Closed Word Session to Discuss the Blazers' Renovation Promissory Note, and an Executive Session to Discuss Personnel Issues, Negotiation Issues, and Renovation. Agenda edits, we have a lot, so please bear with us. Board members, I believe you have a copy of consent and receipts that I will state before education in public. Please remove, under Item 10, Financial Approvals, Letter C, motion to approve the compensation plan for confidential secretaries effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2018, Attachment number seven. Please replace a revised attachment, under Number 10, Financials, Letter E, Attachment number eight. Motion to approve administrative salary adjustments through 2016-2017 school year per the Act 98 agreement, number eight. Next, please add, under Number 10, Financials, Letter M, motion to accept the following donations: Monetary donation in the amount of $2,500 to Knott's Elementary Center by J.P. Mascaro &amp; Sons to be used for a pendency outside classroom. Please add, under Number 10, Financials, Letter N, motion to approve the agreement with Commonwealth Portegeed Associates in the 2016-2017 school year, Attachment number 12. Please add, under Number 10, again, Financials, Letter F, motion to approve the purchase of equipment to complete the maintenance repair project on placeable lots. Material price: $22,345. Items to be purchased, see attached invoice. Items purchased through estate contract, number 4400014916, Co-Stars contract, number 008-289, Co-Stars vendor number 143426, The A.J. Morrow Company, Attachment number 13. Please add, under Item Number 11, Personnel Approvals, Letter A, Number 2, Professional, Letter A, Felicia Pritchard, 7th, 8th grade, language arts teacher, middle school, had MLA with benefits beginning September 23, 2016 through approximately November 23, 2016. Under Number 11 again, Letter B, Number 2, Extracurricular, Eddie Barry-Tempin, headed JP Girls Soccer Coach, High School, at $2,616 at the June 28, 2016, replaces D, Bronsberg. Letter C, motion to approve the following retirements/regunations: Number 1, Classified, Letter A, Donald Freeman, Custodian, High School, effective June 30, 2016.
Excuse me, Mr. Kurtz, I should say retiring.
Excuse me, that is a retirement, effective June 30, 2016. Finally, I have an agenda item that I'd like added, under New Business, Item B, hundredth statement and fifth presentation. Do any other board members have agenda edits?
Mr. Kurtz, I do, under, and I know it'll last this later, but under the Consent Agenda, I'd like Item 8K, taken from the Consent Agenda, and moved on separately. And I also have, and these are not actually agenda edits, but so they don't get confusing later, under the Financial Approvals, I would just like to see Items D, E, F, and H, which are salary increases, I would like those moved on separately, instead of one gigantic one. Now, that's up to the people making the motion, but I think that would help clarify things.
Any further agenda edits?
What letter?
I just have a question, and I kind of said this out earlier, maybe it's been a long time since I've heard a question. As far as the termination of some of the staff, some of the people have resigned and approved their resignations, so should they still be on the termination list?
My understanding is that anyone whose resignation was accepted, they were new for the termination, I believe some of those people may have rescinded their resignation before they were accepted, and therefore they're still employed in the very new community of the classroom.
Even if they're not accepting their resignations tonight?
If you're accepting your resignation tonight, and you submitted your resignation and have not withdrawn that, or rescinded that resignation, then you wouldn't need to go to actions.
Well, I thought we had an agenda edit, actually, for a resignation effective the 30th, and I thought at the last meeting, we had one that was originally the 16th, that was rescinded and done for June 30th, but we accepted the resignation. So, I guess I'm just kind of confused as to how the resigning affected that date, how it can also be terminated.
You don't need to, with the resigning, you need to move from there and go on the termination. I think this list was prepared on Thursday, if you were unknown in that letter. But if they are resigning and you're accepting that resignation again, that resignation hasn't been rescinded, then there's never any determination. So, who's, that one, who's in person, who's one of the closest?
I think, for example, as an agenda editor, which is, they're going to be accepting or planning their resignation with Donald Freeman, and I initially come up, and I believe Frank Adam Iskani resigned effective between 30th and 31st, I read in the minutes we printed out in the last meeting. I don't know if there's anybody else, but those were the two that I saw.
I thought he was sending it.
Yeah, again, I didn't see any paper or comments changed yet.
Changed the date from the 16th to the 30th, by my understanding, that's what the minutes were.
Once it's approved, though, you can't change the date after it's been approved.
It changed before we approved.
That's fine, you can move it to the next session.
And I can move up the minutes and go check that, so. Okay, I don't want to live here.
Is there any action you'd like us to take on the moving of the人事?
Well, I think it's, yes, I would approve that, if we were accepting the resignation, we're going to have to see them.
And you give me the names of those individuals?
There's Craig, and it's Siyamu, and Donald Freeman, can you mention?
Those are the two that I believe I read, I don't know if anybody else sees anybody, but I think those are the two that I know.
Does anybody object to that agenda edit from Mr. Radowski? Okay, we'll do that, and...
Why would you say, subject to confirmation of Mr. Siyamu's prior resignation and the acceptance of Mr. Freeman's resignation? That way we make sure that the matter is settled.
I just asked Mr. Subers to incorporate that into the wording of the motion, so when it comes to the agenda, it would be appropriated. Okay, so those are the agenda edits, moving on. Procedures for public participation, those procedures are listed on the inside of the agenda. Please note that your time will begin as soon as you begin speaking, and you will have three minutes. If you choose to engage the Board, the songs from the Board will count against your time. If you don't like that to happen, state your questions, and it will respond after your time has elapsed. With that being said, oh, not yet. Item 6, Reconations for June, Retirements, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Harris.
It's after the recognition.
Oh, did we miss? Oh, this is okay.
It's Number 7, Mr. Templin.
No, Presentations by Public is 7, one, six, no, Reconations. Unless this agenda is, on Item 6, Presentations by Public comes after Reconations. Yeah, so that doesn't really make sense how it's laid out on the agenda, but we'll get to public comment in a moment. Mr. Harris, Reconations for June, Retirements?
We have six people listed for retirements for the month of June, wanted to give thanks to their work here at the Daniel Boone School District. Donald Magarol, High School Learning Support Teacher. Margold, sorry. Sorry, Margold, Jersey accent, I'm sorry. Denise Stammy, BEC Phys Ed teacher, Sammy.
No, the only one who's here is Donald.
Sandra Lander, Guidance Counselor. Helen Cole, Middle School Custodian. Glenn Crosby, MEC Custodian. And Glenn Howk, District Maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for Reconations, and thank you to those six employees. We're now moving on to Item 7, Presentations by Public on Agenda Items.
How y'all doing tonight? Maybe I'll move that number five there, closer to seven, so you know it's right in the order. The number 10, 10, it was. We hired the, how's that tax cow working out? Did we get $100,000 from Nutrition Incorporated this year?
In regard to the renewal contract, Food Services, the Food Service Management Company Nutrition, they agreed to remit the guaranteed $100,000 to the insurance.
Yeah, she got it now?
I don't know if the check has been received, and they are committed to remitting that to the insurance.
She's still litigating for the $100,000 from the company, right?
That is correct.
Okay, you know, somehow I all remember, last year, 22nd, it was last Wednesday, last year we let go 30 lunch ladies, last month we let go 30, 35 maintenance, but you know what? My darling, don't we have enough money for D, E, and H today, for bonuses? That doesn't make sense, does it? We don't have enough money to keep in-house people, to keep, because the wonderful P's would be the one thing, but my darling, we have enough money for bonuses and raises and anything like that? That just don't make sense now, does it?
The same thing he was on, I just have a question, is this a corporation? Is this a corporation that we're running here, is this a corporation?
Dave, can you just state your name for the record?
David Wagner.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I mean, this is the taxpayers' money, this is not a corporation, has somebody given this money yet? Or is the taxpayers paying this? Anybody got an answer on that?
Well, I mean, just the answer to the question is, it's not a corporation, it's a school district organized and existing under the Pennsylvania Public School Act.
Where the hell did you get this money at? Cheeze my language, I'm sorry, where'd you get this money at?
I can't directly answer the question, I mean...
I didn't, I mean, as far as I see, the taxpayers pay, I pay. How are you, have the right, to give out bonuses? You're getting rid of all us people here, you know, not all of us, but all your custodial staff you got rid of, maintenance grounds, last year you got rid of the cafeteria? Man, I don't know what the hell these guys think you're doing, but you just don't know anything about running a business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Templin, you already had your time.
David Templin, G.A., White T.N.D.M.I.N., East Main Street, Douglasville. Mr. I want to say, was it a safe before? Thank you, Mr. Templin.
Hi, John Sari, 501 Main Street. You've all received my email after the meeting for GCA, by any chance? Have we done anything about it, do you think, like, or who do you use, Frank? Frank is an example, real Frank, he's resigned, so Frank. Okay, Frank is out $531 salary a month, salary. Frank's out $906 insurance a month, so if you put them together, Frank's out, Frank's gone, but he's been out. This is not, nothing was proposed to us, it really is not. We went in at compatible wages and benefit, am I right? Mike sat here and said it, it's in a letter. Mike said, "The custodians would not be moved," first conversation, my head, the custodians, we moved him to Birdsburg. Okay. Myself, oh, so I'm out, I'm jealous. I'm out $582.10. Maintenance, Phil, is, you know, he was out over $1,000. This is not compatible, at all, it's not compatible. I don't have a problem with raises, I think if you do your job, just get a raise. I have a problem with bonuses, right now I get slapped in the face, that's all I can say about that. But, I don't understand how you're doing this stuff. It was supposed to go as cafeteria, that's what Mike kept saying, everything. This is going to flow like cafeteria, this is not flowing anywhere, it really hasn't, and I'm really trying to be very respectful. But this is terrible, to be up that kind of money. Is that helping, are we good? Are we not having a meeting, or are we going to something, Mr. Harris, or is it done? Is it done yet? Do we know? I'm going to go to you, because I, you're the one I've been dealing with, so.
Did you go back to the second GCA meeting? I was at the first one with you, did you go back to the second?
There wasn't a second, there wasn't a second one.
The next day?
There was not a second one, I received a phone call from someone, but there was no information from the phone call. He left a message.
So, the day I was with you, they were...
That was the last meeting.
They were going to go through the personal needs of each person, tell you what you were going to be paid, because everyone isn't being paid the same rate.
Right, and right now, I am where I am, Mr. Harris, at minus $510. After meeting, please, one of the moves.
Okay, but moving forward, you'll be, and we talked, a GCA employee.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, in sitting at the meeting that day, as I heard George and, I believe his name is Doug, Dennis?
Yes, yes.
Said that they would address each of your individual needs, because you're no longer bargaining as a group now. And I spoke.
But is this okay with you? Is this okay with us as a board, that this was done to us? When we were told it wasn't going to be compatible? Did you not say that? You were going to negotiate wages? I'm trying to hear people, I'm trying to hear you. Am I wrong, am I wrong?
The wages, the wages that were proposed by GCA originally were much lower than what they are now.
I wish everybody would, honestly, I wish they would have sat and thought before they talked to us. Because this is not compatible at all, this, I think it's not.
Amy Hinkins, when I watch VCR, I would say, um, my concern as a parent and employee of the district, if the wages, if these custodial staff are losing so much money per month, clearly we'll be leaving staff now for a while, they'll be leaving. My concern is going to be, when we replace the people who will find better jobs elsewhere, what's the timeline for getting clearances done, so we can have our building staff safely in the fall and over the summer? I mean, we have students housed in our building all summer long. This is not only a deplorable issue for staff that are served as well, but it's becoming a safety concern for people who have confidential things, personal items of value in our rooms. If the wages are so low, it doesn't necessarily attract high caliber people. So, my question is, what is the timeframe for clearances, for background checks, all of that, to make sure that we're adequately and appropriately staffed?
The GCA is required to fully comply with all legal obligations regarding the child experience statements, Act 34, criminal background checks, pointed background checks, and are required to have those in place prior to those employees having any direct contact with children other than applicable law. I just wanted to kind of go on the wages, as far as, the district actually negotiated an approximately 30% increase over the hourly rates the GCA represented in its fee compared to the industry, with industry relative area.
And yet it's still a substantial decrease. Now, then, every board meeting, and every board meeting, there's a new resignation, there's a new retirement, we're losing good people, clearly, because there's tremendous loss. Even if you negotiated a bit of a raise, it's still a huge loss, and you didn't answer the question about the timeframe. How long do those take to go through?
The answer is they have to provide them before these people are on our site.
So, will we be under staff, is the question? If it takes two months?
No.
As soon as I get this thing on, okay. Okay, right now, we're entering summer cleaning mode July 1st. The GCA contract takes effect July 1st. The summer cleaning schedule and staff will look much different than the after Labor Day full-time school. The average person for custodial services cleans about 28,000 square feet. We will be staffed accordingly, okay? So, the background checks, the fingerprinting, it takes about a month, month and a half, two months, I mean, we've all done it. So, GCA will be held responsible. Right now, they're getting ready to hire people, right now, that hasn't been completed yet, internal, our staff, and then, once that happens, they will go out and find more staff to meet our needs.
I'd like to request locks for our desks, those of our desks for them to school during lockdown, I'd like to make sure we can lock up our confidential belongings.
I would also recommend, I don't know, I mean, certainly people have purses, wallets, those kinds of things. Other than that, I wouldn't recommend that anybody have valuables.
Well, but we purchase things for our classrooms, because we don't get them through budget. I buy bucket cases, I buy desks for my chair, I buy classroom books, you know, all of these things are my personal belongings now.
Confidential information should be stowed away if all things due to the hearing.
And whether we have outsourced custodial, or we have employees of the district, we all know that that can happen, even with our own employees. So, we should always try to keep our personal confidential self-safe. And certainly, I mean, if there's closets that lock, or there's desks that lock, it makes sense, but if people walk in our locker room, they can just, we would make a problem.
Do we know, does it, how many are definitely retained?
Not yet, I was at a meeting the other day where information was still given, being given out. I made sure that they all had copies, with Janice back there, she made about, what, 20 copies of the benefits manual, handbook manuals that they had, and they were still getting all the information to make their informed decision.
I will agree, I'm a little disappointed, I know the building's, I don't want to buy it for yet, and turn around and find out if this is going to work. So, it could be a whole lot smoother. You're literally telling us about everybody.
All right. Moving on to Consent Agenda, we have a request for Item 8 to be removed. Twenty other board members have items in, like, take it all from the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion for item, Consent Agenda, item 8A through 8QQ, the exception of that item removed?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by, who, by Ms. Radowski, seconded by Mr. Potts. Mr. Martino?
Just said. You want a roll call? Yes. On Consent Items 8A through 8QQ, less Item 8K, Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes, Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Is there a motion for Item 8K?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Radowski, seconded by Mr. Lucas O'Neil. And you're ready for the motion, we get a roll call.
Comment?
Public, I mean, a, or a comment?
The reason I ask that this be removed, we, we've heard that, we always heard that our Schoolwork Association fee, which in this case, this year is $11,000, was offset by the savings we got by having insurance through PSBA. And what I'm hearing this year is, we're doing this primarily because we're getting policy writing assistance from PSBA. But I'm looking at our history, and so Dr. Otto and Mr. Basil decided to have a policy committee, we didn't have a policy committee. And I would think we could forego this $11,000 and have our policy committee review our policies. That's just my comment, it's why I asked that this be separated.
I was just going to say, if the only benefit is the policy service, then that's a really steep price to pay. However, I don't know that the policy committee alone is equipped to review and make changes. And if you look at the edits that we're getting from PSBA, there's a ton of legal and legislative and ads that we simply wouldn't be aware of and could potentially put the district at risk.
I believe we'd be going to addressing those matters with legal counsel, so we'd be paying those funds one way or another, someone kind of pays money.
Right, I mean, exactly, I don't think that would be any cheaper, frankly.
I wouldn't argue your point, but don't we run our policies by our legal counsel anyway?
I mean, I think there's a big difference between, hey, we got this from PSBA, we reviewed it, and he, you know, someone goes through it, but for someone to actually go through one of our outdated policies and take into consideration all the legal changes that have occurred since that policy was entered, I'm sure it's going to take a heck of a lot more time, I don't know, Mr. Harris, if you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, the majority of school districts that use the PSBA policy and all the service, it's the most cost-effective way of, you know, maintaining, updating, and policies, and renewing existing policies, as well as adopting new policies as required. We could not make their efficiency, because you're dividing the cost across hundreds of school districts, so.
Are we done, is this the last year, or?
We think it should be done by the end of this year. Are you thinking, say, by the end of 2017?
It's a three-year contract, I believe, right?
It was a three-year contract, yeah.
One year of the contract, or?
I thought we were in the second year. I thought next year, I think we're done by the end of next year.
I don't know the answer to this question, but would the National Schoolwork Association have a similar service? I mean, we're not members of that.
We need to stay.
Would you be staying, or, and the National Schoolwork Association would be even cheaper?
Well, really, tonight, I mentioned that, but there could potentially still be made third parties in our PSBA. Again, we had a discussion before, did you have any good thoughts, or how many?
I mean, I'm the view, that, Mr. Martino, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't want to peg it, I just don't feel like, this year, we got the choice, but if there's another solution... another solution, but, I mean, again, it's, it's, I liken it to, you had brought up the notion of why don't districts pool their resources to write curriculum? Because that would save all of us money, right? I think that's, that's essentially what they're doing, is they have, you know, five lawyers doing the work of fifty or sixty, and therefore the cost is significantly reduced than if we were just paying a firm to do it for us.
Any other comment? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Martino, no. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Moving on to item nine, fill these in grounds. Are there any motions?
Make a motion for nine A and B as outlined with the agenda edits. Oh, wait, that wasn't in the agenda edits, sorry. That was where the word started. Never mind.
Second. Motion by Ms. Fordowski, seconded by Mr. Ocasio-Niel. Mr. Martino, can we do a voice call?
On items nine A and B, two motions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Number ten, financial approvals. Are there any motions?
Make a motion for ten A and B. I think, I thought it was Mr. Martino wanted to see if he could separate them, which, well, actually, I guess, let me rephrase that, sorry. I'll make a motion for ten, A and B, with the exception of D, E, F, and H.
I believe the item, Mr. Martino, would like to, and offer B.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
It's one name, so.
So.
Ten, with the exception of D, E.
F and H.
And H.
I'll second that.
Ms. Fordowski, suggest that Mr. Martino make that motion.
Exactly, I was waiting, I was waiting.
We're on a screen, though, tonight, every motion made. All right. So that motion was made by Ms. Fordowski, and seconded by Ms. Martino?
Just, just, and S, minus item C, which has been removed.
Correct. That's been removed. So for the sake of everybody in the public, this is ten financial approvals, without the agenda edits mentioned earlier, with the exception of D, E, F, and H. All right. Discussion? Can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rad, I'm sorry, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
I think we missed two of the agenda edits. We only made a motion for items ten and A through M, we forgot N and O, so I believe Ms. Fordowski would like to make that motion.
I'll make a motion for ten and.
Second.
Motion for ten and, and O, made by Ms. Fordowski, seconded by Mr. Scott. And can we, again, financial approvals, do a roll call vote?
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, uh, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Items ten D, ten E, ten F, and ten H remain. And Mr. Martino, if you'd like to make that separately, would you like to make those motions, or, I guess anybody could.
I'll, I'll make the motion for ten D.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Martino, and seconded by Mr. Ocasio-Niel. Discussion?
Uh, on ten D, the reason I had these removed, I, I stated that, I heard this here tonight from the public, um, I stated in the past that until we start capping salaries, I cannot vote for raises or bonuses. And, and I just wanted that part of the record, and I, I want to do that individually with each one of these. So that's my feeling, is that if we don't have money, that we should be looking at capping salaries, not giving out raises and bonuses.
Oh, I think that, moving forward, I'd agree with Mr. Martino. That being said, some of these were determined before, so I'll, I'll be supporting you, but I, moving forward, I like to be a hundred percent. Any other comment?
Just, I think, I, I would just like to add, I think, um, I understand that the word bonus is oftentimes used in the private sector in, I think, a little bit of a different way than we're sort of potentially using it. And I think for some of the people that got bonuses, that was in lieu of a raise. And I'm not saying that makes it right or wrong, but we did, we did, um, we did sign an agreement with the school staff, and, and they got raises as well. And so, um, there is a difference between a bonus and a raise in that it's not, it's not a commonality, it's not a raise. It's this year and next year, they may or may not get that, whereas a raise is, is permanent. So, um, there is a thought behind the, the bonuses, at least from my perspective, as opposed to raises. But our people, our people do work hard, we do appreciate our people, and it's not that, we don't appreciate the classified staff, and I know that the public and the classified staff have a different opinion of that, and we're not gonna change it, and you can think what you want, but, um, I guess just relax.
Thank you, Ms. Fordowski. Any other comment?
All right. I have, Mr. Harris has a comment.
James Harris, 264 Buckhead Lane, Douglasville, Pennsylvania. I do not have a voting seat on this board, but I would like to have him polled. Since we do not have all of the contracts settled, I do not think it's right that I, as the leader of this district, receive a bonus or a raise. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Curtis, just a point of order, that's a different, right?
F.
A little bit preemptively, send it in, Sarah. Um, all right. So item T, is there any further comment on item ten B? That can, that can make sense. Can we please get a roll call vote, Mr. Martino?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, no. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. I'll make a motion for ten D, the administrative salary adjustments.
Second. Motion by Mr. Martino, seconded by Mr. Ocasio-Niel.
Or a comment, same, same comment I had before, other than I would add that this has nothing to do with not respecting the employees or the jobs they do, I just think the salaries need to be capped.
For the extension, roll call vote.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, no. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Now, Mr. Harris has requested that no action be taken on item F. There is no motion for item F, we can move on to item H.
Another point of order, Mr. Supers. Can a ad hoc member of the board be moved items from the agenda?
No, but it takes a, somebody has to move the item.
Somebody can still move that if you vote on it.
Or you could.
Or we can let it go.
No, no one moves it, there's nothing, yeah, just move it on table.
I'll make a motion for ten F.
Is there a second? Roll call, is there a second? Motion dies, like, the second. Is there a motion driving ten H?
I'll make a motion for ten H.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Martino, seconded by Mr. Potts. Discussion?
Yeah, second, let me just write this down.
I think the meeting is moving now.
In addition to what I said earlier about salaries needing to be capped, Mr. Small's contract calls for him to be evaluated by the board, and his salary, whether it be a raise or a bonus, be based on that evaluation. I don't remember us ever doing an evaluation this year on Mr. Small. Mr. Small, have you received an evaluation? So we're actually violating his contract.
Thanks for pointing that out last week.
Now, who made that motion? Would you like to retract that motion?
No.
The motion's only, and the motion is before the board, uh, board member can, you know, the working, we're together. It's a roll call, I imagine.
I'll make a motion, save.
Mr. Potts has moved the motion to table, and Mr. Scott has moved and seconded the motion. There's no debate on the motion table, so we will have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Byes?
Mrs. Byes?
It's specified with the motion.
The motion is to table on ten H.
Yes, I want ten H table.
Mr. Curtis? I'm sorry, Mr. Martino, no. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski? Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Motion to table, passes six one.
All right. Let me, let me reset the microphone. It might be you.
I'm just curious as to why this wasn't brought up during our executive session, that you very willingly participated in and, and had opinions of it.
Simply because I didn't realize it at our executive session.
Moving on to item number twelve, programs.
Should we do eleven?
Yeah, we'll do eleven.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, we're at eleven now, thank you, again, my notes here. Item four on number eleven, personnel approvals. Are there any motions?
Make a motion for eleven, uh, A.
Remember that there are.
For A, B, and C as evidence.
As a mandate. One second, please. A motion has been made by Ms. Fordowski and seconded by Mr. Ocasio-Niel. Is there a discussion? So, is there any discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
A roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Ocasio-Niel?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fordowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Before moving on, the reason I turned to Mr. Harris was, um, we have a new assistant business manager, and this approval is made not under personnel but under financial approvals because she has a contract. I'd like if we could just recognize for a moment our new assistant business manager, Catherine Haynes. Welcome to the conference. All right. Moving on now to item twelve, programs. Is there a motion for item twelve A?
There is no motion.
Oh, we don't?
It's just informational.
Just informational, thank you. My personal.
Fire, fire.
Uh, number thirteen, policies. This is a, a notice that the Policy Review Committee met tonight, Ms. Fordowski, I'm sorry, Mrs. Byes, would you like to give an overview of the policy meetings tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Curtis. Much was accomplished in the policy committee today in way of the new range in the one-hundred series. We got through, got three quarters of them. We also just brought back some old issues for discussion. If anybody is, has any input on uncompensated leave, building security, or the use of district owned vehicles as we formulate these policies, please do, um, send your comments to me. Otherwise, I can really make stellar project progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Moving on to fourteen.
Policy, number policy.
Absolutely.
Um, this is quite, I don't know where, um, you are on policy review, but it, it just came across to me, we were, I was discussing as far as facilities, disposal of assets, but Mr. Small said that some school districts have a policy on that, we know, so maybe we could look at that. I think he said, I think seven, seven of states, I don't know if we've done that already or not, but maybe if, if we had it, we would get to that.
Thank you, yes, we'll do.
Moving on now to old business, the action item list. Do we have any feedback on any of those items? Can anyone spring news like the policy that Mr. Small? No update, paperwork agenda, Mr. Madison's not here tonight, Waiter Foundation Professor note, Mr. Wolf is not here tonight. And then, move on to item fifteen, new business. Mr. Martino?
Can I add a few items to the old business?
Uh, yes.
Uh, there's a couple motions I'd like to make under old business, and they're all based on the raises and bonuses that, and other funds we approved to spend tonight. Apparently, we have more money than I realized we had, and since we have so much money, I'd like to make a motion that would rescind the tax increase that we approved two weeks ago.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a second? Motion dies, like, the second.
Next motion I'd like to make, on the same basis that we have all this extra money, but it was, the issue was raised at the last meeting, that we thought we had five hundred thousand dollars in our capital reserve, and we only have a hundred and fifty thousand. I think we need to revisit our elementary staffing, which by policy we should reduce by one, which would add funds to the capital reserve. And I make the motion that we reduce the elementary school staffing by one, in accord with our policy.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies to the like of the second.
And the last motion I'd like to make, all for the sake of reasoning, is when we discussed the middle school staffing, which I thought we had an agreement from the administration to eliminate a position, and then I heard. to eliminate a position, and then I heard one justification after another to keep the position. I think we need to eliminate that position because it reduced enrollment of over 40 people in the sixth grade that would add funds to the capital reserve.
So the motion is to...
To reduce the middle school staffing by one for sixth grade.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that one.
Okay, the motion, motion made by Mr. Martino, seconded by Mrs. Bytis. Now move on to discussion, Mr. Martino's motion, is it in?
Can you elaborate on that, Mr. Martino? Where's your phone?
Mrs. Bytis, why isn't your microphone?
She asked me, she asked me to elaborate on what I said. Mr. Small was questioned by, he thought, not he thought, the people questioning, understood that we had $500,000 in capital reserve in every budget. And when the budget we voted on came out, there's only $150,000 in capital reserve. The $500,000 was a result of Mr. Small doing an analysis of the decline in enrollment and what he thought would should be the decline in staffing and it would have added several hundred thousand dollars to our funds available, which he had designated for capital reserve. I was under the impression that we had a concurrence on reducing the middle school by one from both the superintendent and the assistants of the superintendent. And as it turns out, we apparently didn't. So if we had a decline of more than 40 students going into sixth grade, I think proof it says that we should staff accordingly.
Mr. Harris, was that consideration already made when we, when we made this discussion or is this new information? Are we just finding out that we're 40 down? We already factored that into the old, to the original discussion, correct?
The original discussion happened 40 times.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I don't believe that the statement that the $500,000 was reduced because of staffing, non-staffing cuts is accurate because my understanding from Mr. Small is that that, that reduction was made in, at the January, was, beginning of the year, Finance Committee meeting, and we didn't decide on those staffing non-cuts until last month. So I don't really know that the two tie together, but it's a nice argument.
Any other discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Dowski?
No.
Mrs. Bytis?
No.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. O'Neal?
No.
Motion fails, two to six, two to five.
Are there any other motions under old business? All right, moving on to new business. This is a discussion I had preparing to chair tonight's meeting. I sat in on the agenda, writing the meeting, and I thought it would be helpful just for the sake of the public, the board members, and the unenviable procedures in the position of controlling the timer, just add to the procedures for public participation and note specifying as to when the time meeting will begin. I always, I've heard to do it with individuals speaking, but it would be helpful to have it to when they sign in, when they speak, I think it would just be helpful for everybody to be on the same page. I don't know what we want that to be, that I'm requesting that we include that on the agenda to ever be determined to be appropriate, so everybody's in there on both sides of the table.
First, are we timing?
Yeah. So I'm recommending one person begin to speak. If any of you attention that?
If they sign on.
Whether they sign in during or after the meeting.
Right, if they want to sign in and then start talking, or talk and then sign in, but once they begin to speak, I think...
The timer starts.
So my request then is to just add an item inside the agenda covered in states that time begins when the individual begins to speak.
Sure.
Again, the only reason I bring that up is to avoid any type of confrontation. Again, the more information that's out there, the better. All right, shifting gears, I have something I'd like to read again, this being the first time I've chaired a meeting. I've got a statement, I'd like to present this, or give. I would like to announce that I will be traveling for the foreseeable future. I'd like this to be entirely transparent on work-related duties. While I plan on returning to Douglasville permanently, I do not know when I will return, could be days, weeks, or months. I intend to continue responsibly serving on this board until such point as this bill will be useful or until I move out of the district. Because we are all unsure of what the future holds, I'd like to present the district with a gift tonight. I intended to give this at my final meeting, but upon reflection, tonight seemed inappropriate. Almost six years ago, I complained to the school board about the tattered flags that flew in front of the middle school. While my message was valid, the flags were replaced the next day. My approach at solving a problem could have been more descriptive. Over the last five years, I believe our community has put this district on the fast track to becoming one of our commonwealths for New York school districts. From expanding educational opportunities through increased state and sports offerings and the establishment of full day at-risk kindergarten, to installing the most competent management team in recent memory, re-aligning district schools to benefit all students, connecting budgets, kept property taxes down for district homeowners, the Daniel Boone Area School District has recovered from those days almost six years ago, while kindergarten, sports, music, and extracurricular programming were on the chopping block. On that note, and in celebration of how much our district has grown, I would like to present this American flag. The Daniel Boone Area School District. As the accompanying notice says, this flag flew above the United States Capitol in Washington, DC on October 22nd, 2014, the 200th and 80th anniversary of the birth of Daniel Boone in Berks County, Pennsylvania. To find out if this flag would be put on permanent display at Daniel Boone Area High School so that it may inspire students to instill a sense of patriotism, district, and local pride, and offer welcome calls to PDHS. So I'm going to present this to Mr. Harris. I thought it would be a comforting way, saying as I complained about the flag, first time I came to one of these meetings, we expect to do this, get one back. With a little story behind it, too. All right. Any other new business?
No, I just, it's not like a business, but I just wanted to thank the, the youth organizations that had given donations this evening, the athletic department, the Roosters, and J. K. Estero. We really appreciate it.
All right, any other new business to report? Well, we've been running along tonight, we've been having a couple of comments. Whoever during the time wrote this.
He's nice.
I know him. Well, they're all nice.
Florida Rain on 3/67, okay. I just want to go back sort of to the whole GCA. Since we've moved into this contracted services with the cafeteria last year and the employees being contracted out, and now with the maintenance and grounds crew and all of that, policies. We have a lot of policies when it comes to classified staff. There's one policy regarding contracted staff. I'd like the board to look at these contracted employees that are being brought in, what policies do they have to follow? The classified policy or the one contracted policy? And within that policy, it does talk about the background checks and if they are not going to have direct contact with students, they need to have a conversation about what is direct contact. Yes, they may start July 1st. We don't have students in the building. Actually, we do have students in the building. My son is in the high school three days a week for two hours a day. They come across, you could come across any of these contracted maintenance workers going to the restroom. We have camps in the building. Students go to bathroom, they go to places without their supervisor there. Is that direct contact? Is there a magic number? I think these are things that we need to look about, look at, and be proactive rather than reactive, especially when, yes, social media gave me a lot of information, most of it bad, some of it good, but there is information out there about some of the employees that GCA has hired. That recently, and just a couple of weeks ago, another one was arrested for creating a Facebook personality and having contact with a student. Yes, there's no students per classes, but there are students in our buildings at five times. So what is the definition of direct contact? And when do they need to have their classes before they can become, come into the building? It's a little different. When I worked full-time, I had all of my clearances. I resigned from full-time to go to substitute. I had to get all my clearances all over again and be re-approved rather than just moving from a full-time to a substitute. So to bring people in, saying, well, they got the 30 days or 90 days to get their clearances, is that the best interest of our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neal. I'm going to add, and I think would be helpful to clarify those policies, but it's also, I think, worth noting and important to note that I believe the contract GCA requires them to follow all of their policies.
They cannot be in the school until they have their clearances.
Yeah, so I'll say that again.
That's part of the GCA contract. I don't know what... The contract with GCA states they have to have their clearances before they come into the school. I don't know if the, if their policy, the contracted policy that you're talking about is a separate... I'm not sure who that covers, but the GCA contract spells out that they have to have all their clearances before they're in the school. And I understand that things happen with outsourcing. You know, there's plenty of schools where you see teachers that have had inappropriate contact. There's plenty of schools where, it's, it's not just, let's, we're trying to make it out that, that outsourcing is the issue. I just read one today, it was a teacher. I read another one that it was an IT staff. So it can happen whether they're school employees or they're not. All we can do is our best to maintain that they have all their clearances, but outside of that, there's nothing to mean we can control anything, whether they're our employee or not.
Mr. Harris, would you mind bringing that policy to the next policy meeting in August so we can have a discussion on that, make sure it's aligned with the contracts? And we should check with the Quakeham Towns policies to see if it's GCA also. Thank you.
My name is Philip Trasher and I'm part of the maintenance department. I've been in the school district for 13 years and I have a letter here of my resignation. And I resigned from the school district because there's no way I can stay here under these conditions as far as the loss of pay. I have to pay almost $900 a month for repairing the pan and that can't be done. And it's a shame that I have to leave here because I feel that I've been such an asset. There's so many things I can do and I have done and most of the old members don't know it just because you haven't been here that long. There's a lot of different structures that I've worked on and moved around and repositioned and done and made things look new again. And if you talk to any principal or any teacher that I've done work for, they're fully satisfied. And I don't feel that you're going to get that from anybody else. When you get employment from, out of city redded, okay, I'm not going to do the things that I've done. I'm an old high school town with an ancient school. I'm an artist. I was a finished carpenter for 18 years before I came here. I can do it all. I keep this place secure. I work on the mold doors, all the locks. Anytime somebody says something, they jump on it and get it done. It's not going to happen. Talk to anybody that I've done work for, they will agree. You can keep that, I've been here long, but no.
You're right, I talked to one of you today, before anybody went in or to build a, even the students weren't in it because they're hired to be with it, they have their clearances. And I agree with you, it can happen anywhere, anytime, but you hired this company coming in knowing they're suspended from state. They are suspended from state and we're bringing them in. You are absolutely right how it's happening here and it can happen anywhere. The job postings that go on the rights list, two totally get on all the clearances. One says all the clearances need, the other one's missing clearances. I just, you are absolutely right, but you went into this knowing a lot of lawsuits, there's a lot, geez, what were you so attritioning? I'm not sure why we need to abandon hand. What common sense would set one company has it all, but we didn't do that. Because apparently they didn't fill out paperwork, right? How would you do that if a business manager filled out one for, you got a tier, you'd have one filled out the rest. I think it would have been a lot easier straight across the board if it was just one company. But yes, I checked all clearances today. Before anybody, I'm gonna tell you how that happened, if it's ever been on.
Aaron Durso of Silverfoot Drive, Pittsburgh. I just had a question on 10K, classroom lease agreement with the PCIU for the pre-K at Berks Elementary Center. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I'll get it.
I guess the length, what's the length of that lease? How many classrooms?
It's one year. I'm sorry, it's a, one classroom for one year.
Okay. And I'll just make my own statement that I wish you guys would review the vote and keep the C open as an elementary school for everyone in the Daniel Boone community. So I'll keep coming and saying that, but thank you for your time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Bergowski, seconded by Mr. Potts, meaning adjourned at 8:38 PM.